Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September fourteenth regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council. Prior to our roll call this evening, a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, I'm told that because of some interactivity problems with Zoom, we will be unable to have interactivity between those folks who are on Zoom and us. However, they can see us, they can hear us. We know just by looking at the screen who's on Zoom. So included in that group is our city clerk Lynn Fazikas. Lynn, I trust you can hear us. And we do have our executive assistant Ruth Scott, who will also be doing minutes just in case you are unable to to hear us, but you should be able to hear us. So. Welcome, everybody. Nineteen years ago, this past Friday, most of us got out of bed, started our day on a bright sun splash day. As the morning progressed in the eastern United States, two hundred and forty-six people boarded flights, two thousand six hundred and six went to work, thirty-four firefighters were ready for their morning shift, sixty police officers prepared for their morning patrols, and eight paramedics reported for work. None of those saw past mid-morning. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven died, more than six thousand injured. May we have a moment of silence for those lost on September eleven, two thousand one. Thank you. Kindly stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Executive Assistant Scott, would you please call the roll?
Morris. Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is to approve tonight's agenda. Unless there are any items that any members of the council would like to either add or delete, we will ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Not seeing any hands raised, I would move, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Discussion, roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yep.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Tonight's agenda is approved as presented. Okay, now we move along to item D on your agenda, public participation. If you'll note, look down a couple of items, you'll see our one item, presentation. We have, we're very fortunate to have the community relations director for Facebook, Matt Sexton, with us, and he's going to make a presentation. When I saw Matt a little bit earlier, I said, we have a very participative community. And I'd be happy to move the agenda around, and Matt said, no, let's keep it right where it is. So Matt, we do have a lot of public participation tonight. I think you're going to find that this is one of the great things that makes DeKalb such a wonderful community. And that is that we hear, we talk, we collaborate, we don't always agree. But we, we do have a situation where, where, we're the kind of community that I think Facebook admires. We certainly, obviously admire Facebook be making the decision to locate here with its twelfth data center in the United States. So we have public participation tonight in chatting informally with a number of our city council folks tonight. We have, since COVID began, a procedure where we have a form on our website which asks folks to write letters or give their comments. Apparently, there's a feeling among the council, most of the council that I've talked to tonight, that we should go ahead and read those letters, as we did a couple of weeks ago. And so that will elongate our public participation portion of our program. But again, we're a very participative community. However, there are a few folks who have come to our meeting tonight, and I think we owe them the courtesy of, of speaking first, and then we'll go ahead and read those letters into the record in terms of public participation. Council, does that seem like a, a good point? Alderman Fanouken?
My other, only question would be that I understand that all of these letters you're referring to concern a particular item, and I think that's when they should be read, not in public participation.
Okay, does that, does that have a, what does council feel on that? Most of the letters that we have tonight, or a good share of them, deal, I think all of them frankly, with the backyard chicken issue. So if it's the desire of the council, we can wait until we get to that item on the agenda, and then we'll read those letters. So we do have some folks, though, who hear, who are here, who would like to speak to that item, and I am going to give them the courtesy of either waiting until we get to that item on the agenda or speaking during public participation. That falls in line with what we usually do. Okay, our first speaker who would like to speak to item J one is Bessie Chronopoulos. Bessie, do you want to wait until we get to that item? Okay. Foti, would you like to wait until we get to your item on the agenda?
Yes.
Steve Capitan, would you want to wait? Ellen Rogers, J five transit. Neely Erickson. Okay, you'd like to wait until we get to the, the chicken item? Christopher? Chickens, we'd like to wait until we get there. Joseph Rathke?
Yeah, I'll wait next.
Okay, wait, okay. And Andrew.
Also.
Okay, you'll also wait? That's going to make it easier on you, Matt, because we're not going to have too many letters read then, prior to your presentation. And I'd like to call on our city manager, Bill Nicholas, who would like to make a few comments prior to Matt Sexton's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've already half-introduced Matt, so I'm just going to add that Matt has a very specific role with Facebook. He is their central region development regional manager. He supports Facebook data centers in Nebraska, Iowa, and now in DeKalb. He lives with his wife in Altoona, Iowa. Prior to joining Facebook, Matt worked for members of the U.S. House of Representatives and U.S. Senate from Iowa. So without further ado, we're very happy and proud to have Matt Sexton here tonight to tell us a little bit about his role in the company's community actions program.
Mark, thank you all very much. You can tell us this is going to be a banger, and it's going to be great. So like Dr. Nicholas said, my, my name's Matt. I'm on the community development team with Facebook. So we will get going, I was told I had ninety minutes. But we will keep it as, as brief as possible. I think it's about ten, ten slides or so. So again, just want to level set, my, my name is Matt, I'm with the community development team. City manager Nicholas said I have, I'm fortunate enough to have the three best sites in the fleet, which is Altoona, Iowa, Papillion, Nebraska, and of course, DeKalb, Illinois. This is my second personal trip to DeKalb. I know, obviously, the city and the mayor, and a lot, a lot of folks dealt with our site selection team from California, but I was born and raised in Iowa and still live there today. So I have a much easier three and a half hour drive instead of cross-country flight. So thank you very, very much for having me. Okay, so I always like to start with our mission, which is to give people the power to build community and bring the world closer together. And so as Facebook works towards that goal, the amount and type of information on our platform expands and evolves. So I'm sure many of you were, initially, Facebook, you'd share brief little text statuses. And today, we're sharing 4K videos, 3D photos, Facebook Lives, Oculus, virtual reality universes, and more. So essentially, those new experiences I just mentioned require a more robust platform that are singularly supported by our data centers. These buildings are critical, again, to our mission of giving people the power to build community and bring the world closer together. Hopefully, you recognize one of these apps. The F, of course, represents Facebook. Immediately to the left there, we have Instagram. To the left of that, far left, is Messenger, and on the far right is, is WhatsApp. Between these family of apps, all of which will be stored in our data center, which will look like that photo in the back there, we have a hundred and forty million small businesses who use these on a monthly basis, a lot of them as their primary way to contact customers or update hours and things like this. And then over three billion people on, on the planet use one of those platforms every single month. And so to have the infrastructure to handle that global demand is obviously very, very important. And so we cannot be, not be happier to be here and have that happening right here in DeKalb. So you can see here, these are all of our data centers in the world that are either under construction or operational. If they are purple, they are under construction. So we have thirteen now announced in America, and we have three in Europe and one in Singapore.
Can most everybody see the screens? Okay, good, thanks.
Right. Well, we'll try, we'll go through, go, go slow. But obviously, a, a lot of folks always wonder like how does Facebook choose a community to invest hundreds of millions of dollars of, of infrastructure? And there are a few answers, obviously. Here, the, the first bullet is a shovel-ready site with good access to infrastructure, roads, digital infrastructure, things like this, and renewable energy is very important. I can touch on it a bit more in a bit, but Facebook is committed to offsetting all of our energy needs with a hundred percent renewable. That's globally, that's all of our offices. And so actually, coming here to DeKalb was a very, very important part of that strategy. Facebook just signed a PPA, I believe in Jackson, for a hundred and seventy megawatts. And so that project will have its own construction and maintenance benefits for that community. But that renewable wind energy, that Illinois wind energy, will singularly power our data center here and contribute to our overall portfolio as we are the largest corporate purchaser of renewable energy in the world. The other, obviously, the second bullet point here is a strong pool of, of talent. It is very, very important. These facilities are based in a place where we know we can pull the best and the brightest and have the best and the brightest live and, and raise their families. So between, obviously, the great set of community leaders and NIU and Kishawaki and all of these things, this was a natural fit. But, but really, there are probably near countless places in the country that have those metrics. And so the real kind of intangible determiner is our community partners. So I obviously want to thank the council and, and Mayor, Mayor Smith for your leadership here. But really knowing that we can have a, a personal relationship that we'll be in a position to execute quickly, which I think we all, all acknowledge happened here. It's, we really just can't say enough about the, about the personalities. And so as I've gotten to know the folks here, either in, again, with the Chamber and Economic Development Group, in the Park District, and, and, and the city, it is very, very clear to me that our site selection chose this, again, for that, for that final option of community partners. So very, very briefly, again, I know, I know, there's, there's a lot to get to, but our economic impact, this is from a study about three years ago, so it's a little outdated, but we anticipate an updated one later this year. Generally speaking, for the type of investment that, that comes with one of these sites, and in this case, eight hundred million dollars right here in Illinois, we, we know the site will support at least a hundred jobs, full-time, high-paying jobs. It will have twelve hundred construction workers on average for, for the life of the project, and will result in a little over seventy-seven million in average wages. A lot of people wonder what type of jobs are in a data center. You can see one of our site operations techs working here on a server. Essentially, the bulk of the jobs are either two teams. One is what this gentleman represents with our site operations team. Their job is once the building is ready, their job is to keep the servers up and running, which is obviously very, very important. So they ensure that the hardware is healthy and that the data is backed up and directed. When necessary, this is your typical network engineer, things like this. Our other large team is the facility operations team. They are responsible for the health and maintenance of the buildings. These buildings are world, world-class buildings. They use eighty percent less water than the typical data center and are incredibly energy efficient through a kind of convection cooling. Certainly happy to go into that. But they, our facility operations folks handle the water, electrical, and air pressure systems therein. So I kind of, kind of teased it a bit, but in 2017, we committed to reducing our greenhouse gases by seventy-five percent and reaching one hundred percent renewable by the end of this year. Reporting for the end of this year will be due, I believe, in quarter one of 2021. And so to come here to DeKalb and know that we can have our new facility here run off Illinois wind energy is going to be paramount to us, reaching the goal we established over three years ago. Community is the fun stuff, this is what, this is what I do. We were obviously committed to playing a positive role in our data center communities through primarily supporting STEM education. We have an annual community action grant program. We encourage and organize our employees to volunteer locally several times a year. And obviously, just being earnest members of the Chamber, economic development groups, supporting unique community events like Corn Fest and things like this, just so that we are truly immersed in the, in the community and a, and a part of kind of the local ecosystem, just like any other business that makes DeKalb so special. This is where I blow your minds. We have a Facebook page. It's facebook.com/DeKalbDataCenter. We will have all of our information about hiring and different benchmarks as, as we make towards coming online in, in 2022. If you message that page, it'll, it'll go directly to me and members of our communications team. If you have any inquiries at all, please do not hesitate to message the page directly. Our grand opening video featuring the mayor and city manager Nicholas is currently on there, north of a hundred and twenty-five thousand views. So please do check that out. And finally, as, as careers become available, if it's with Facebook, it's facebook.com/careers. Otherwise, Mortenson Construction is available there on their Facebook page or mortenson.com/careers. And so with, I'm certainly happy to take any questions. I did leave my card on your desk that has my email and phone number, but certainly happy to take anything off the top. But thank you very much for the time tonight. I know, again, I know it's a, a big agenda, so I certainly, certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Unless there are any other questions or comments regarding Matt's presentation tonight or Facebook and generally in DeKalb, I want to thank you. Look forward to, I know you've got a full day tomorrow, DeKalb, and visiting a number of organizations, meeting a lot of people, such as you did when you were first here a few weeks ago. And we're just glad to have you here and glad that Facebook has placed its confidence in DeKalb, Illinois.
Definitely, and thank, thank you all. Again, I would not be here without the very hard work and dedication of you all, so thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Skip him a hand. You never want to turn down applause, Matt, so, you know. Okay, let's move on. We have no appointments this evening. Item G, we have a consent agenda. Consent agendas, as you know, are usually enacted by one motion unless council member wants to delete one of the items to discuss that further. Seeing no hands raised, I will, first of all, read the two items on tonight's consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of August twenty-four, 2020. And number two, accounts payable and payroll through September fourteen, 2020 in the amount of two million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
The consent agenda is approved as printed. There are no public hearings tonight. There are no special considerations this evening. Moving right along to item J on your agenda, and there are copies of the agenda in the foyer, if you'd like to grab one. Our first resolution is number one, Resolution 2020 dash zero nine seven, approving the proposal from Pappas Development for the redevelopment of the former City Hall property at two hundred South Fourth Street. Prior to discussion on the item, I entertain a motion to put this on the table. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, before you make your presentation, we have several folks who would like to speak this, to this item. The first person is Bessie Chronopoulos. Bessie? I'd like to ask before Bessie starts her comments that anyone tonight making a public comment, please try to refrain those comments, keep those to three minutes or less.
Is that all? First, I'd like to welcome the Facebook people and wonder if they are going to offer any classes for senior citizens who are challenged technically, so they could use Facebook on their cellphones.
Sure.
Sure.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yes, we, we have experts flying for different types of trainings, either through trainings and resources for nonprofits, small businesses, teachers, senior citizens, first responders, things like this. So again, when we get back to normal, we will have folks here, but in the interim, once the site's online, we, we offer those online.
Finally, I'll be able to use that stuff. Anyway, some of us older folks, you know how it is, what can I say? What I'm about to say is not meant to hurt anybody's feelings. It's not what it's about, simply expressing a point of view. And the premise of what I'm going to say is based on how important it is, I think, to look at what has happened in the past so that we can evaluate how it's worked, how it hasn't worked, and how we can apply it to the present and the future. So, and I've had a little bit of experience in, in, in the community. So that's, from that point of view, how I'm sharing it. But some of these words are going to be a little strong, so, and I, again, not meant to hurt feelings. There are three concern, three concerns that are related to the topic that you're talking about here today. One is the selling of a square block of property, the TIF dollars that were used improperly, and the aging housing stock in both single-family homes and apartments. Oddly enough, those are all related to this topic that you are going to be discussing here. If the city council allows more apartments to be built at that location using questionable TIF dollars without having a handle on the overall condition of the city's housing stock, well, DeKalb will put itself in a most difficult position of allowing for poor planning practices and questionable budget practices. The decision to move our city hall to downtown was made quickly last year with no public input. The selling point was that we'd have that square block backed on the tax rolls, not talking, not taking into account the many thousands of dollars that were spent over decades to acquire homes and land so that this square block could be used for future expansion. And it boils down to these three main things that I think you need to take into consideration, and maybe you will, I don't know. How should TIF dollars, how should TIF dollars be spent? Well, why aren't we looking at some of the buildings in downtown, since that is the driving force behind this TIF, and use some of those dollars to upgrade existing buildings? There are two considerations regarding TIF under this category. See where the money could be used elsewhere? Don't use it up all in full-scale, until a full-scale probe is done into the funding practices from the past, as far as TIF is concerned. I feel very, very strongly about that. Older homes and apartments, if they are not taken care of, we're allowing for future blight. It's that simple. Add to that the fact that we have no comprehensive plan for the last ten to fifteen years. How could a thriving, wonderful town that can bring Facebook in not have a comprehensive plan? Come on, council. Mr. Irving mentioned how his thirty-year-old daughter and her friends are wanting smaller homes. If you remember, he came by and talked about that. I Googled it, see, I can do Google. I, I Googled that, and lo and behold, you find a whole bevy of information about how that is a trend. Indeed, the millennials, that's what they want. So we're not really looking at that, and we're being sold that these apartments extended stay are the trend. Well, how many do we need? How many do we need? So years from now, when the aftermath of these decisions is realized, future councils and DeKalb citizens will say, what were they thinking? That's what I want to avoid. Have there been more payments, and this one, I'm sorry, John, but have there been more payments to Mr. Pappas for management services as for cornerstone? If you didn't catch that on page fifty-four in the TIF audit, six hundred thousand dollars, there's the invoice, no itemization, for management services. Is that what happened with DeKalb Plaza? Is that what's going to happen with the Mooney Building? And if this other one is built, remember, the apartment's built, and I'm going to finish with this story. About twenty-some-odd years ago, an alderman, green as can be, and if only I knew then what I know now, asked the question when new apartments were being built on the west, west of Annie Glidden. I asked, the question was asked by this alderman, what are we going to do with the older apartments? What's going to happen? Nobody had an answer. Well, you know what, folks? Annie Glidden North, that's what's going to happen. That's what I'm afraid of. That's why I'm, some of my friends are saying, Bessie, you're beating a dead horse. I'm not beating a dead horse. What's happened in the past, we should learn from. Please consider this much more carefully. John, I'm sorry, that's, you know, I've known John ever since he was a kid.
Thank you, Bessie.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, and I expect that.
Our next speaker is Foti Pappas. Foti?
How's everyone this evening? Mr. Mayor, council, staff, audience. Really, today, I was just going to come to speak in addition to really this, this new great proposal Pappas Development has put forth. And I guess, to start, I wasn't planning on it, but I do want to address Bessie. Now, Bessie and I don't agree on much outside of saying Christus Anestia Nister. That's Christ has risen, is that correct, Bessie? Although I give her all the respect in the world that although she's a critic, she shows up here and in person tackles those issues directly, unlike a lot of the critics that stay home in their basement and they're keyboard warriors. So Bessie, I thank you for that, that's fantastic. Now, you know, real quick about the TIF and, and kind of micromanaging everybody else's decisions, what I would love to see is under that What I would love to see is, under that administration, a real breakdown of what return on investments we're receiving from the TIF dollars spent under that administration. Because there was clearly TIF dollars spent, correct? So, Bessie's great at keeping notes. There's about 40 pages. She showed up here today. She can show up with a few pages, give us every dollar that was spent in our return on investment to date. As taxpayers, I think we'd all love to see that. So with that, again, thank you, Bessie. Now furthermore, really just speaking to the beauty of this project, the joint buildings here is going to be really revolutionary for this downtown market. It's just going to continue to build on this great momentum. And gentleman here from Facebook, right, he's going to be pointing people that direction because that is the type of housing that clientele is looking for. And that's housing that is clearly lacking in this town. If it wasn't lacking, I would not be at 100% occupancy. Again, the feedback we're receiving from the cornerstone, the feedback we've been receiving from the plaza, has been nothing but positive. I think the community that gets it really appreciates it. I think maybe some people that were in the middle of the road, especially at the beginning, which I don't blame them, these were big investments, are now starting to see the traction that we're really starting to build downtown. You're seeing that in the worst of times now, that the downtown is still full. Parking is actually starting to get a little tight, which is great. First time ever, we'd be talking about people looking for parking spots because the restaurants are full. Even with limited capacity, the apartments are full. And this is only going to continue. I really did want to come up here and speak to this, I guess really with questions prior to this. So if I can, in this setting, open it up to the council for specific questions? Or is that too early on in the session? Do you want me to come back up?
I think what I would suggest is that we thank you for your comments at this point, Foti. Knowing that we're going to hit this at some point, and we'll open it up to any questions, we know you're there.
Definitely, and a final thought, I do want to thank all the men and women in uniform. Speaking to your comments prior about 9/11, it's about time we all take a deep breath and really thank the people that keep this country safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Foti. Our next individual who'd like to speak to this item is Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. I too have a Facebook question. You mentioned the wind energy, and I do, I'm proud of the fact that DeKalb has a lot of wind energy and we're growing solar as well. But what happens if the wind doesn't blow? What's the, I'm sure you've thought of it. What's the, how's that going to work?
Yes, you certainly have a problem with the power. It's the utility that provides the power. And it's aggregated on an annual basis. So it's not, it's not related to any particular customer.
I was just thinking in terms of 100% renewable, so. But we're developing solar, so maybe we can work in tandem on it, so, between the two. All right, regarding this issue, at some point when the city grows again, and with FacePoint, Facebook and the candy company coming probably sooner than later, the city council and the mayor will have to plan for and fund a new city hall. Before approving this, making this decision, I would ask the council to consider some questions. And I'd specifically like to ask my alderman to consider these questions before making that decision. It states in here that 210 K per year in property tax. How much of this is the city's share? Secondly, how much would it cost the city to buy adequate property for the purchase of land and building a new city hall? Think about the cost of the police station. Another question, why are we continuing to subsidize residential development? This is a $600,000 purchase, but it's got a $750,000 TIF subsidy attached to it. In effect, we are paying Mr. Pappas to take this property off our hands. A considerable piece of property in which the city has invested a great deal of money over the years. In the deep background, the staff memo says that this agreement is subject to negotiating a purchase agreement and a redevelopment agreement. Please describe how this process will unfold and the opportunity for public input. Why wasn't this done before this agreement is passed? Will passing this agreement tie the city's hands about selling the property? So in other words, are those agreements, are those negotiated purchase agreement and redevelopment agreements the city obligated to approve? Is this the final decision of selling property, city property, on a resolution without adequate public input? I think that selling city property is a serious business and should have adequate notice of the public and adequate public input prior to the decision happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, those are the three public comments regarding this particular resolution. I'd like now to turn it over to our city manager, Bill Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some considerable background here. I'm not going to repeat all of it.
Considerable.
Just for the record, just want to say that the council first considered this in committee of the whole on August 10th, as you know. At that time, we presented three development proposals that were a result of a request for proposals and RFP process that began in late June, and all the proposals were due no later than the end of the day on July 20th. That particular RFP had two pieces to it. One was a financial proposal, and all of the participants were asked to, as well, address what they hoped to accomplish in terms of the objective of redevelopment. All three of the respondents touched on both the financial piece and also on what their project outline was, their conceptual outline was. And I didn't repeat all that information, but some of it I did highlight for you because it's been a couple meetings since we last talked about this, and the public also might have been interested in that. If you go in your background to page six at the top, you see a brief comparison of the financial proposals for your edification. On a basis of what we have discussed in terms of the project parameters and also the the financial proposals that were submitted by all three, I have recommended the Pappas Development Proposal and I, as I did back on August 10th. I will speak to something that was asked by Steve. I made a reference in a very general way to two remaining steps. Whoever was to get this, this nod from the council would have to go to a closing. It's a property, and there has to be a closing on, on the transfer of the title from one party to another. That's what I meant by the purchase agreement. That's a closing. That's a standard real estate transaction. And then the other piece is, this has been zoned institutional for, since the late 60s. And so there would be a commercial zoning that would have to go with this to be consistent with what's on, on that block, on the north side, the south, and the west side. And, and of course, the city highways that pass through there for commercial purposes. So, that's it. There's, there's no subterfuge here. There's no, there's no hidden agenda. That's what was meant by those two comments. So I recommend the, the Pappas Development Proposal to you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Foti has already spoken to this. John Pappas is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Okay, now, we have this proposal before us. Again, quite exhaustive. We've heard the initial three developers. Let's open it up for any further discussion. Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Their resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2020-098, authorizing the award of a contract to Triggy Construction Incorporated in the amount of $121,075.50 for sidewalk replacement on 7th Street and on Normal Road, including various other minor segments, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total of $200,000. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You will recall that in the spring of this year, we were concerned that we would not have the capital funds in light of COVID impacts to do our street maintenance program, which usually includes a sidewalk component. Oftentimes, that sidewalk work is done along the longer stretches of commercial streets that we're working on. Sometimes there's a scattered site piece to that as well. So we removed that, which is about $250,000 worth of annual spending on, on street maintenance. Happily, as we've reported here before, we were able to secure additional funds from the MFT program at the state level and to the tune of $250,000. And I'm pleased that our city engineer, Zach Gill, who's in the audience tonight, jumped on the preparation of bid documents for the completion of a number of sidewalk improvements, a fast-track the bid process. We received bids on August 28th, and you see them portrayed to you on page six of your background tonight. Triggy Construction was a low bidder, a very aggressive bid, and they're a responsible company. We've vetted their past work. And we are recommending the approval of that bid, but we're also recommending an extension up to $200,000, which is within our allocation. But the idea here is, there are scattered site projects that aren't exactly along Normal Road and North 7th Street that people have, they've been on the list for a while. And our hope all along, including last spring, was to be able to tackle those. Areas where trees have torn up sidewalk sections, there are four or five here, six or seven there. And it would really make a difference at the ward level in our community. So what we've recommended, since we know what the low competitive bid is, and it's a responsible bidder, is to expand a little bit on the allocation, up to $200,000 for the year. Obviously, for the work that was specced, they still have to stick to their bid, but there'll be some additional work. Typically, we do this in the course of a year, and the city engineer is, is the one who supervises this and makes sure that it's done properly.
Thank you, Bill. Any further comments or questions? Alderman Morris?
I have one quick question, and I feel like I reached out to the city engineer on this, and he did reply to me. And I'm not sure which agenda item it falls under, but I wanted to make sure that we had included, and maybe, I'm sure Zach Gill can speak to this, that we included the crosswalk that's to go on Annie Glidden. He knows what I'm talking about. He's got, he's giving me a thumbs up. So, is that in this one?
That's actually in the bid, so it's secure.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Their resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2020-099, authorizing a professional services agreement with Civil Engineering Services Incorporated, CES, for the engineering design of Afton Road in an amount not to exceed $95,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to say that in the course of the summer, we've also received, as you know from previous agendas, more recent agendas, that we've also received some money that connects to the state's Rebuild Illinois Program Bond Program, which was approved back in 2018, and now the money is working its way down to the local level. And this has helped us do a number of things. And this was a allocation, the most recent one, that was particularly supported by our state reps, Tom Demmer and Jeff Keiker. What we are proposing to dedicate $95,000 toward is the completion of the design for Afton Road. We're aware of what is intended there. That's the road that will link Keslinger and Pete and Gerler, roughly aligning with where a piece of it would have gone through. It's just on the east side of the Facebook campus, and we've already had the council approve the right-of-way. And this is now the completion of the detailed engineering, and we recommend your support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Their resolution is approved. Number four, Resolution 2020-100, authorizing an expenditure from the local allocation of Rebuild Illinois Bond revenues for Afton Road right-of-way and engineering in the amount of $400,000. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, in the practice that we follow every year, we, we address at the local level resolutions that sometimes adopt bid results and the like. But also, IDOT wants their own separate resolution to approve actions that ultimately they are accountable for as well. So this is taking two things. You just did one tonight, which is to approve an allocation that would help with the design of Afton Road, and previously you have approved the right-of-way acquisitions. And so you wrap those two together, and that allows us to spend up to $400,000 on those two things from the standpoint of IDOT's rules and regulations. So this is a belt and suspenders item, but we need your support.
Thank you. Any comment or questions? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Their resolution is approved. Before we move on to Resolution number five, and Alderman Smith will be leaving the room per his request, based on the fact that he has a vested interest in this resolution. But prior to that, I'd like to let the folks who are on Zoom, hopefully you're able to hear us and see us. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, we have an interactivity problem tonight with Zoom, and that, and it does not enable us to have interactivity with you folks on Zoom. But looking at the board, I see a lot of you are there, and I appreciate your attendance tonight and hope that you'll be able to, to see what we're, what we're, what we're acting on tonight. So, that's just a housekeeping item. So let's move along to number five, Resolution 2020-101, authorizing a transit services provider agreement with TransDev Services Incorporated to provide paratransit and deviated flex route services for the city of DeKalb and the DeKalb urbanized area from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2023. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor. It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Prior to your speaking, Bill, we have a number of folks who would like to speak. The first is Ellen Rogers. Ellen?
Thank you. I'm glad the mask can come off. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the council regarding the paratransit contract. Knowing that certainly VAC staff and Board of Directors are certainly disappointed that we were not recommended to be awarded this contract, particularly after almost 38 years of providing this service as the operator for the city of DeKalb. However, I am here tonight because of our role as advocates for the transit dependent in our communities. That's a role we take very, very seriously. To say these are challenging and unprecedented times is certainly no understatement. COVID-19 has impacted so many lives, businesses, and communities. Certainly, we are no exception. Although its impact on public transportation has typically resulted in lower ridership, it certainly has added new demands in how we serve our passengers and operate our system. At VAC, we have worked very hard to be proactive in ensuring that we have adequate staffing, safeguards, and precautions in place for the safety of our passengers and our staff. We've taken the initiative to procure adequate supplies of PPE, including protective barriers on our buses. We've scheduled rides to ensure social distancing, enforce mask policies, and employee screening policies, and we've worked very closely with the city of DeKalb and the DeKalb County Health Department. We take our role in providing services to the most vulnerable, again, in our community, very seriously. I'm certainly not trying to paint TransDev as a non-feeling profit, only driven by profit corporation. However, we are aware of the challenges that TransDev has already faced with their fixed route system. They simply have not had an adequate number of drivers to manage the contract. They've had to reduce hours of service, and certainly, the timely operation of their routes have been impacted. There lies our concern in terms of the ability to meet an additional contract that is certainly adequate for the needs of our citizens. With a focus on staffing problems, and again, we are not unsympathetic by any means of the challenges that TransDev have been facing, but I think that their attention, you know, certainly, that was a great need for them to focus on, but I think that it may be delayed some of their responses to the COVID virus, and they did not act quite as timely as we did in some instances to ensure the protection of the passengers and their staff. These are the reasons why we're asking you to consider extending VAC's contract, to ensure that TransVAC is positioned both to meet its current contract and to also have the infrastructure in place to meet the paratransit contract. We are not asking that you vote against awarding that contract, just if you can delay it. We just believe three months is an adequate time to make that transition, especially in these times of COVID. My presence here tonight by no means is seller greaves. We certainly, I think, more than possibly other not-for-profits, other individuals, understand the FTA process. We've lived with it for more than, more years than a lot of people in this room. It's pretty rigid, and we do understand that. But do know that our purpose is a dedication to our mission, our riders and our communities, and that is our driving force. So, again, if it is a recommendation to award the contract to TransDev, if that is approved tonight, effective January 1st, do know that that will in no way change the commitment we feel for the transit dependent in our communities, and certainly in ensuring the highest quality of service these individuals deserve. And we are confident that you share in that commitment for quality service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, there are no other folks in the audience who would like to speak to that. I don't believe we have any letters that have been written that speak to this issue, so I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Bill Nicholas, who has provided, again, some significant background for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Just by way of context, the city does not spend its own dollars for the paratransit system and for transit generally. We receive a large amount of money every year. We are the funnel for that in effect and the stewards of that, and a lot of the money comes from a state operating assistance program and another from the FTA, and those are the monies that would be behind the funding of the contract that is before you tonight. I think you're aware of that. We requested proposals for the paratransit portion because we are required to provide a competitive process required by the federal government, provide a federal process as contracts are expiring. The Voluntary Action Center had just completed a three-year agreement, really does at the end of this calendar year. And so, proposals were requested back in May. The due date was July 30th. There's a specific process for the review of these bids. It requires that a panel be organized to review the proposals, and the panel included representatives from NIU, DSATS, which is the acronym for DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study. It's kind of an odd title, but that's what it's been since the mid-'90s, when it was organized, to be an umbrella for the, again, the funneling of federal and state dollars toward transit purposes in DeKalb County. And also, representatives of the city of DeKalb who are here in the room tonight and can help answer any questions you may have. The proposals are spread on Page Eight of your background for tonight's agenda. These are for a three-year contract, and each of the years is broken down, as was requested in the bid process. The panel had to rate these according to certain criteria, having to do with staffing, the operating methodology, professional references, and ultimately, the price proposal. And the ratings that were done by the panel are also on the bottom of Page Eight. On the basis of the bid breakdown, the recommendation of the panel, TransDev has been recommended to you as the low proposer in this case. We have some representatives from TransDev in the audience tonight, the Senior Vice President of Business Development, the Vice President of Business Development, and the Husky Line General Manager, who is probably not going to be able to stand up, but is here as well. The, Ellen spoke to a very highly regarded service, which has served 38 years in a capacity to provide transit services. Those services have been expanded over the years and have evolved. The room is full of people who have helped raise money and volunteer and do Meals on Wheels and other things for Voluntary Action Center. The paratransit contract is a specific piece that some people in the room maybe have not been familiar with and not been connected with, but that is what's before you tonight. I will tell you, as a longtime supporter of VAC, it's very hard for me to make this recommendation, but I did recommend on the basis of the bid process and the integrity of the bid process, and the fact that the federal government and the state government are the ones who are providing the funding, not us. We don't have a local preference policy that applies here. I felt obliged to recommend and support the TransDev proposal, and that is what's before you tonight. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. We also have city staff, our transit staff who are here present, as well as the TransDev representatives before you.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Now, let's turn it over to any comments or questions. Alderman Fanouken.
Yeah, if I may, Bill, I'd love to ask a couple of questions of the representatives from TransDev, if I may. So, if one of you would come up to the podium, so more people can hear you. One of the things that Ellen mentioned, and that I've been aware of because I sit on DSATS, is that over the last six months, TransDev has had quite a problem in providing enough drivers to meet the needs of current contract you have on the fixed route system. With that in mind, in the ongoing pandemic, how do you envision being able to have enough drivers to take on this additional responsibility?
Sure, and that's a very fair question. I wanted to assure this group, and also, Ellen, I appreciate your comments tonight as well. As I answer that question, I do want to say that if we are selected by this council, we will work hand-in-hand with you through the transition to make sure the current employees are offered opportunities to work with us if they want to come over with us. None of those current employees would go backwards and pay our benefits. We value that experience that they have, and we would want to make that part of our transition process. When it comes to recruiting and retaining employees, there are a few things different for this contract than the challenges that Melissa and her team have dealt with on the NIU service. This is all full-time work. A lot of our employees for the NIU service are part-time students. When the pandemic came in, we certainly had some challenges with that, with folks went home, didn't want to be part of the service, that sort of thing. We, of course, corrected on that when it comes to the NIU services with recruiting full-time folks from this community, more of those folks than the student makeup. That was a large part of the population. We also, when we put our proposal together for these services, have increased the wages that are offered for drivers, for the starting wage, by $2 an hour. My mask keeps dropping. I apologize. It keeps touching on what we're talking about. Anyway, the extra $2 an hour, based on our market research, working closely with Melissa and her team, we believe that will help put us quickly over that hump that we're having a hard time to bring folks in the door. And again, this is full-time work for the paratransit services. We're very familiar with this type of service. We do it all over the United States, and we think that the things that we've put in place to help correct the recruiting at the other location, as well as the increased wages that we're offering, and also for offering positions to the current employees if they want to join our team, we'll also make sure they don't go backwards and pay our benefits. We think all those things together will help solve that issue we had on the NIU service.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, in openness, say that many years ago, I drove for Husky Line. In fact, I began driving in Husky Line in the fall of '72 and drove through '85. Wages are a little bit different than, I think, when I first started. I think it was $1.25 an hour. I know that makes me sound old, doesn't it? And no, Bill, it wasn't with horses, no. So...
I'm akin to the spirit of that. I also started in the business as a bus driver. We were making $5.25 an hour when I drove buses, but I understand.
But, you know, so I understand the challenges of operating the fixed route service here in DeKalb with a large number of student employees. That's always been a challenge. I know TransDev has fairly recently taken over the operation. So, that while, again, as Bill said, having been actually on the board of the Voluntary Action Center at one time myself, I really hate to have to vote to approve it to you, but that's not a slight of you. That's just because of how well VAC has done. But realizing the constraints put on us by the federal regulations and the bidding process and all that, I think that we needed to be as transparent as possible going through the whole process. So, thank you.
You bet. I appreciate your questions.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Favor, and then Alderman McAdams.
I'm just going to piggyback on what Alderman Fanouken said. So, my question was going to be, given the nature of the routes and of the service, is this going to receive kind of a higher priority than the NIU?
Yeah, and thank you for that question. We actually also have proposed a dedicated paratransit manager that will work for Melissa, completely focused on this service. She's got decades of experience. I think actually she's listening in on Zoom right now, very excited about the opportunity to come here. She was a former general manager in Illinois before for another service for a different agency, but completely dedicated and focused on this entire service. So, we will have a dedicated resource who is paying attention to nothing but these services, to make sure we work closely with the city staff and making sure that we meet all of our commitments to you.
Okay. That, I mean, that's my number one concern, is that just, again, given the ridership and the seriousness of the nature, that this receives priority and taking care of it.
And we do clearly understand the sensitive nature of the passengers that use these services. Again, we're very experienced with this, so your comments did not fall on deaf ears. We very much respect that population that needs these services, and we'll work very closely with that during the transition, all throughout the transition, to make sure that there's clear, open, honest communication with the community that we're going to serve.
Thank you.
Alderman McAdams.
So, my question is more of a nuts-and-bolts question. Assuming that you received the contract, when residents have complaints, we all know that that's a part of the business, and we've certainly heard complaints about transit in the past. Walk us through your quality control for that. We want to make sure that there's a good procedure, that there's an easy way for consumers to talk to your drivers, and make sure that all of that's in place, as well as a way for us to oversee it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, and thank you for that question. So, part of the technology that we're proposing has the ability for Patricia, our proposed manager, to track that information. Everything will be very closely communicated with Marcus Sabrina as that happens. And when the customer concern comes in, the customer is always right. We understand that. So, even if it's something that's a difference in what the rider's guide says, it's upon us to help them understand how that rider's guide works and what that issue is. So, even if it's a perception issue, that's their perception. So, it's the reality of what's happening. So, we will work very closely with each customer that has any concerns, and then follow-up. That's the key, right? You can't send in a complaint and have it just go into a file drawer somewhere, never to be heard from again. So, we make sure then Patricia will reach back out to each customer and explain what happened, what our follow-up was, and to work through that. Also, we empower our operators through our Going for Care sensitivity training program, to really be able to answer those questions as they are, take that information in, and then feed back also when they see that passenger on the vehicle again, "Hey, we're working on that issue." And just keep that dialogue, because those comments are critically important to this service.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further comments? Alderman Perkins.
In the vein of adding capacity, driver capacity, what if the $2 assumption that you made isn't adequate to add the capacity?
Sure. It's a very fair question. We're committing to the city that we're going to keep these services fully staffed and move forward as they are. Then, we would internally need to adjust that wage up, put a recruiting bonus in place, or any of the other kind of things that we've seen work in other areas where the increased wages didn't work. That's incumbent upon us to do that for the price that we propose, without coming back to you saying, "Hey, we got to go add more money."
That's my real question. So, if it's not adequate, then you're not going to be coming back asking for more because the assumption was inadequate, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further questions? You know, in any bid process, we have to vet those folks who are submitting bids. And I trust our staff that they do that in all of the instances as numbers are brought to the city council. I did a little bit of research on my own, and there's no doubt that across the United States, TransDev knows what it's doing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? And I appreciate that. So, I trust that vetting process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And despite the fact, as Bill Fanouken alluded to, the fact that our hands pretty much are tied in terms of what our ability is to do in this particular instance. I, too, have been a supporter of Voluntary Action Center at VAC for so many years. So, my vote, if I am asked to vote tonight, will be in the affirmative to support this agreement. Several years ago, we had another company that had served this community for 30 years, Waste Management. Waste Management is a top drawer multinational company. They had provided great service to the city of DeKalb. But as I cast my vote, I did that for the very same reason I'm casting it tonight, and that is to adhere to the integrity... that is to adhere to the integrity of the bidding process. So I wanted to make those comments, not only in support of this resolution tonight, but in support of Voluntary Action Center. A lady talked to me today, and, you know, this is not going to impact on the Meals on Wheels program. That is still going to continue as a VAC offered service. But as is the case with anything, provided this vote is affirmative tonight, there's going to be a little transition period, and we would hope that, again, if this is awarded, that TransDev will continue to work with Voluntary Action Center in that transition.
You have my commitment to that. We definitely respect Voluntary Action Committee. We've been part of this community for, I think, 49 years now, and we get it. We definitely understand they're a pillar of this community, and we want to work with them through the transition very closely.
Thank you. Any further comments? Alderman, Fanoukun.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear too, that as you mentioned, VAC continues to do Meals on Wheels, but they will also do, continue to do the rural area service.
Right, right.
Specific to the urban area service.
Right. Thank you. Any further question? Alderman, Morris.
I guess I just want to echo what we've heard said, that this is not without a heavy heart that we make this decision. And, you know, I was really taken by the communication I received that asked that we vote no on this. And understanding the process a little bit better, and, you know, I had to do my research and understand it, and it really just doesn't seem like there is a logical way that we can have TransVAC be the organization that does this after the FTA's process. So, I just want to say I'm sorry, because that's really hard.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Regretfully, yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
That resolution is approved. Moving along now to item six on the agenda, Resolution 2020-0, excuse me, 102, approving a City of DeKalb referendum on the April 6, 2021 consolidated election ballot with regard to urban chickens within the DeKalb corporate limits. Motion, please. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. We welcome back Alderman Smith, because when he heard backyard chickens, he wanted to get back into the room, right? And we have a motion on the floor, a second, and we do have some folks who would like to speak to this item tonight. We have a number of letters that we will be reading, however, to the courtesy of those people who are in the audience tonight, we'd like to allow you to speak to this item, if that's okay. City Manager Nicholas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's your call.
Yes.
I assume that people who have been sitting here will be able to speak.
Okay, my call. So I will first of all ask Neely Erickson to come to the podium, please. And again, we would request that you try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
I timed it, Mayor. I'm at 3 minutes and 30 seconds, so it'll give me just a little bit of leisure. So, good evening. My name is Neely Erickson, and I am the Government Affairs Director for the Illinois Realtors. I am here today on behalf of the Hometown Association of Realtors and our more than 300-member organization to express our appreciation to the city council for listening to the community members' interests regarding a referendum for urban chickens within the DeKalb corporate limits. Realtors are opposed and respectfully request the city council to reject the request for a referendum. The popular trend of raising backyard chickens has caused a few local governments to revise their animal ordinance. However, lost in the enthusiasm are the drawbacks. As a professional network across the country, Realtors are in a unique position to speak to how urban agriculture trends affect neighborhood property, community health, and increased local government costs and oversight responsibilities. It is important to note that the memorandum drafted by your city manager indicates that costs will not be neutral to the city of DeKalb. At a time when the city is already facing a deficit due to the financial hardship caused by COVID-19 stretching city resources and finances is counterproductive, especially when allowing for backyard chickens is a poor public policy question because it does not serve a higher public purpose for the overall welfare of the community. Urban chicken farming presents health risks and procedural questions that must be addressed. The responsibility of nuisance and abatement issues will fall to building staff, but police officers are often on the front lines to respond to complaints and escaped fowl. Often, these complaints lead to confrontations between neighbors and are potentially driven by issues surrounding our current domesticated animals such as dogs and cats. Moreover, these coops can draw for wildlife, which creates additional safety concerns. A mere question on a ballot about chicken farming does not provide enough education on this matter for a voter to make an informed decision. A few questions to consider. Will local veterinarians make sure that fowl are healthy? CDC indicates germs from backyard chickens can cause viruses, illnesses ranging from skin infections to more severe illnesses? How often will these coops be inspected to ensure compliance? If we have learned anything from this current pandemic we face is that health and safety is paramount. The city must be proactive before health and safety nuisance presents itself. What is the process and necessary evidence a complainant will have to provide when filing a nuisance complaint? Residents are entitled to know basic information before voting on an issue where they may find themselves at a city council meeting, running a gauntlet, trying to resolve a dispute. The nuisance and questions, the nuances and questions surrounding urban chicken farming are numerous. Therefore, the issue is best left to the city council to discuss. Please remember, if passed in April, this referendum is a directive to the city council to create an urban chicken farming policy. Is the city council ready to tackle critical questions such as those I've submitted? Again, a referendum question such as this lacks a higher public purpose. It does not promote health, safety, or community unity. As elected leaders, it is important to understand that good intentions do not always create good public policy. It is vitally important to consider the indirect effects. Therefore, Realtors ask the city council to not place a referendum on the April 2021 consolidated election ballot regarding urban chickens within the DeKalb corporate limits. Thank you for your diligence on this matter and considering our position to maintain the zoning ordinance as is, and vote no on this referendum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Neely. Our next speaker, Christopher Tensgren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Manager Nicholas. I am the advocacy committee chair for the Hometown Association of Realtors. And as Neely mentioned, our 300 members, which reside and practice real estate between DeKalb, Lee, Ogil, and Whiteside Counties, echoing Neely's sentiments that we are opposed to making this a ballot or referendum initiative. Our background in, I mean, when it comes to real estate, to borrow a popular, often heard term, we, if you've seen something, or I always forget how that one goes, but when it comes to real estate, you know, we've seen a little bit about real estate in our travels from coast to coast. And my service ranges from national level appointments, serving on Smart Growth. I serve on the Green Resource Council and attend sustainability summits on behalf of the National Association. And while this is certainly an initiative that is worth discussing, we are vehemently opposed to it because of some of the things that Neely already mentioned. The, probably the biggest things that we worry about, other than the obvious financial impact, are the health impacts or potential health impacts. She mentioned the CDC, germs from backyard chickens can cause various illnesses ranging from minor skin infections to severe disease that could cause death. Also, it's advised that chickens not be kept in households if the households have childrens of the age of five or younger. Also, not all homeowners support chicken coops in their neighborhoods. So this definitely may have an impact on the home buying and selling processes and home values. So, as Neely mentioned, we speak against this initiative. We feel that it should stay as a zoning ordinance and remain with the city council for management of the program and thereby keeping it off of the ballot as a referendum. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Christopher. Our next speaker, Joseph Rathke.
Hi, my name's Joe Rathke. I'm a student in DeKalb, and I'm speaking on behalf of Sunrise DeKalb, which is a local youth-led environmental organization. I'd like to take a few minutes just to voice my support for the referendum in question and explain myself on that. So to me, what's really at stake here is an issue of food security and, more broadly, an issue of community control over space. As we've talked about before already at this meeting, and everyone is aware, we're in the midst of a pandemic crisis that has really, I think, revealed a lot about both the local and the national community. And one of the things that's been at stake there is an issue of food insecurity. I don't know if you remember back to the spring when the coronavirus pandemic first hit, and a lot of the food commodities that people have taken for granted for a very long time were suddenly not available in the same way they once were. And over the course of the summer, both locally and nationally, food insecurity has increased dramatically as a result of people losing ready access to income that they rely on and as a result of disrupted supply chains related to the pandemic. And I think that issue of inadequate and unequal access to food is something that really should be taken into consideration here, which makes the response to it certainly a little bewildering to me. I think, you know, I don't want to claim that chickens are the end-all solution to local food security issues, or even a small part of it, because God knows we have a lot of work to be done to ensure that people in the local community have ready access to food security, housing security, and general economic security. But chickens, ultimately, however trivial they may seem, are a fundamentally local food resource. They're a local food resource that could be used so that residents could utilize community space for the independent food production. And as a result, they're ultimately a resource that could provide independent agency to people in the local community over the food that they consume. And that stands in stark contrast to the nebulous, you know, international and often these days, very insecure supply chains that provide food to the local community as it stands. And again, I don't mean to say that this would solve the problem by any means, but the response, in light of that, the response to the urban chickens resolution on the agenda has been kind of confusing to me. I think the issue has at turns been trivialized as something that's too insignificant to be worth our time, or as something that, an issue of birds that are so grotesquely noisy and unsanitary that they must be railed against at no matter what. And I think neither of those positions really reflect what's at stake in an issue like this, because chickens are ultimately a resource that would allow members of the community to have independent agency over the food that they produce. And I think that's something that's more than ever valuable in a time like this. Now, as to property values, I certainly think that property values should not get in the way of ensuring that people in the community have access to resources that can allow them to have control over the space in which they live. And I think as seemingly trivial as this issue may seem, that's really what's at stake here. So I urge people, the members of the council, to consider that, reconsider their positions on the issue, and allow this to go to referendum in April of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Andrew Tillison?
Hello, I'm Andrew. I'm also with Sunrise DeKalb, like Joe, and I also wanted to express my support for backyard chickens to be included as a referendum on the 202021 ballot. Cities like Naperville, Batavia, Grayslake, Homewood, Elgin, Naperville, St. Charles, and Chicago do allow backyard chickens currently, and I think contrary to what has been brought up previously, there is not in those cities, which I would say that many of us have been to those places as residents of Illinois for presumably a very long time. These cities are not overrun by chickens by any stretch. There is no fear of going into the street and there being chicken experiment as far as the eye can see. I think some of the concerns with chickens that are expressed here are unfounded from my own research. From my experience, when I see people talk about chickens being integrated in their towns, they talk about them being a great source of food, as Joe mentioned, because clearly there is a great deal of food and economic insecurity in DeKalb right now as a result of the pandemic. While there is still much to be done about these bigger issues that were mentioned, the COVID pandemic, the housing crisis, and racial justice in this town, we bring this issue to the forefront because mutual aid programs and food banks, families in need of a reliable food source that persists during a pandemic, and the good people of DeKalb would ultimately stand to benefit from backyard chickens. And with all due respect to previous speakers, I do believe that there is an inherent benefit from allowing backyard chickens. I don't, I would disagree with the statement that there is no benefit to the municipality by allowing these. I do strongly believe that there are benefit. This is not the first time this issue has come up in city halls. While I know it has come up repeatedly, and I fully believe this is because of something that is within the popular will, something wouldn't come up every few years if the people of this city truly didn't want it. And all of you here today, as city council members, are there to represent your people, and I, this is why I would strongly urge the council to vote in favor of being passed to a referendum because of the public will is there. And if there is a need that can be filled in this municipality by backyard chickens, I think we should allow the people to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, prior to getting to some letters on this issue, we have one more speaker in the audience, Vessi Krenopoulos.
I must say, this has been an interesting meeting. I honestly don't know, if I were in your shoes, how I would, if I would be in favor of backyard chickens or not in favor. I don't know. I would need more information. At the last meeting, the council made the right decision and read a variety of letters from the public, even though it was recommended that the council should really not tackle that issue at all. You did the right thing, and after you listened to the public, you did another right thing and you had a deliberation, which is wonderful. That is exactly what the council should be doing. And you went around and round and round, you pointed this out, pointed that out, and then somebody came up with, well, gee, why don't we have a referendum? Makes sense. Now, after you all kind of agreed to that, it's being recommended to you to not have a referendum. Well, you know, democracy is a process, and democracy can be messy at times, and democracy takes into consideration a wide, broad range of opinions, the pros, the cons, and the in-betweens. And that is, by doing a referendum, that is exactly what is going to happen, and it would tell somebody like me, who hasn't really made up their mind one way or another, give them an opportunity to look more closely at the pros and cons. And if you look at the backup material, I didn't see very much information in there. I saw a lot of, oh, it's going to cost this much and that much and that much. I didn't see very much information as to how other municipalities who are, I would say, probably far more sophisticated even than our beloved DeKalb, how they managed to do this and don't have a problem at all. I didn't see any information in there in the backup at all. So I think you should have the referendum. Democracy in action is exactly what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie. Okay, are we ready to read some letters? I am going to, once again, since I think my voice would not withstand reading each and every one of these, I'm going to just sort of divvy these up if I may. So be ready. I will read the first letter, and then we'll divvy them up. The first letter is from Aline Click, 2834 Wedgewood Drive, DeKalb. The city manager says backyard chickens will cost the city money. I disagree. Yearly permit income can be set and used to cover costs of providing permits. For those who violate the rules, fines can cover costs. Seems he is arguing for the sake of arguing and pointing out costs without including the income in his math. Mike, if you'd read the next letter, please, from Diana Izzard at 550 Northern Lane.
Yes, from Diana Izzard. I just can't understand why we owners of property in DeKalb, Benafarm suburb, can't have backyard chickens when Chicago and many other cities allows chickens. This is discrimination. I am Ward Two and can't wrap in my head bigger cities allows chickens, even roosters, but a farmland city as DeKalb, you can't own them. What is the agenda? We are going to pay more taxes on our properties. We should be allowed to own chickens. This is ridiculous, and we shouldn't have to waste time trying to convince some people with a power trip thinking that you can tells us what we can can and not do in our own properties. This is against human rights, the right to decide what we can or can't own while making taxes higher, how this is going to cause more expenses. We have all kinds of wild animals living in our backyards already. How chickens are going to be causing any damage or expense? Completely ridiculous. You better believe me, I will take note of this, who is against having backyard chickens, and my vote will be for the opposite candidate. You will not have my vote coming springtime if you continue with this ridiculous decision. I am in Ward Two, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Verbic. Alderman Faber, if you'd be so kind as to read the next one from Kimberly Shattick, 304 Forsyth Lane in DeKalb.
My name is Kimberly Shattick, and I'm a resident of the Second Ward. I too am disappointed. I was disappointed when Bill Fanoukun never responded to my email in June regarding my support for backyard chickens. I'm accustomed to my alderman being responsive even if she or he does not agree with my point of view. An acknowledgement even demonstrates some commitment to the concerns of your constituents. Later I learned his point of view and could not, and could only assume, that's why I hadn't heard back. But I have good news for Alderman Fanoukun. If backyard chickens were allowed in DeKalb, he would not be required to have them in his backyard. As an academic librarian who helps individuals evaluate information, I have been disappointed by the use of the clearly biased information used by the city manager to shut down this conversation. Instead of referencing documents produced by chicken rescue organizations, I urge the council to seek out unbiased, recent, and relevant information. When using a source, consider, does this organization have a stake in a particular outcome? Do they have any financial interest? Use sources that back up claims with real evidence. Did you know that Elgin had a backyard chicken pilot program? It was so successful that they expanded the program. Here is a source from the city of Elgin about that measure, https://elgin.fource.com/engage/s/article/backyardchickens. There are numerous examples such as these locally. I urge the council to talk with these other city leaders nearby. Use unbiased research. Do your own primary research by contacting your counterparts who have been through this, as Brittany Schaefer has already done. I urge you not to shut this down, as I see as planned in today's agenda. Respectfully, I can sympathize with the mayor's disappointment in the timing of this request, but in reality, this has been a request for years. Also, I believe that there will be a time without COVID, and that life will continue to go on. This was to be on the April ballot, by then it is my hope that we as a nation and a community will be in recovery. Regarding the cost, backyard chickens do not incur and spread without maintenance as weeds do. As has been demonstrated by nearby towns, chicken can be cost neutral. The figures and reasoning represented in the agenda today reflect a personal position, not an unbiased assessment. Among the present policy concerns, the public policy priorities of the city council are to build bridges towards better understanding among all DeKalb residents through connection and inclusion. I can tell you as a new resident of DeKalb, my experience with city council completely ignoring emails from their constituency and by dropping, as suggested by the city manager, an issue that has been brought forth repeatedly instead of committing it to a public vote, this experience has been one of disconnection and exclusion. I do not envy the jobs you have right now. This is a difficult time for us all. There was a moment when I thought that this request would be treated with respect and approached with an open mind. That is what I am requesting of you all today, respect and an open mind. That is what I want out of public servants. Respectfully submitted, Kimberly Shattick.
Thank you, Alderman Faber. Alderman Fanoukun, if you would read the next letter, please, from Andrew Wannick, 413 Fairmont Drive.
Thank you. My husband and I are relatively new residents in DeKalb. Our experience with backyard chicken ownership is based on living in Madison, Wisconsin. Since 2004, the city of Madison has allowed for backyard chicken ownership with permit and restrictions similar to that proposed in DeKalb. While not personally owning chickens, we have three neighbors within a block that do. Madison consistently rates highly on best lists for quality of life, and our property value continues to increase. Our experience having chickens as neighbors has only been positive, and we would happy to have them as neighbors in our new home. Unlike barking dogs, they make little noise. Some coops are simple and go unnoticed, others are of fine carpentry, clearly displaying pride. And finally, being close to our food source is a healthy ethic for a city to embrace. It's an ongoing trend, and it is a sign of progressive thinking fitting for a college town that will attract younger residents to live and invest here. Andrew Wannick and Frederick Bernhardt.
Thank you, Alderman Fanoukun. Alderman Morris, if you'd be so kind as to read this next letter from Sarah Mueller.
I live within the DeKalb county limits, and I believe this should be rightfully addressed. You talk about, quote, "huge costs" involved with keeping of backyard chickens, but have you researched your surrounding communities that allow just this? I believe not. Genoa and Kirkland both allow them. There are permits required, specific guidelines, and a yearly fee that residents whom choose to keep chickens must get and abide by. Both communities are not, quote, "overrun with chickens," nor have the communities been burdened by huge financial costs or predators or disease. I think just disregarding this issue and not listening to your residents is a huge disservice to your community. That being said, not researching your surrounding community's ordinances and pros and cons of such is plain negligence. Now is the time, if any, to address this issue. We are in the midst of a pandemic, and our food sources are being recalled left and right. A few chickens that provide a family with a constant, clean, safe form of protein could be seen more as a benefit than a harm. End of text.
That letter from Sarah Mueller. Thank you, Alderman Morris. Alderman McAdams, would you read the next letter, please, from Brittany Schaefer?
Sure. At the last meeting, I heard a lot of negative comments about the people of DeKalb, how we can't be trusted to be responsible with our animals or our yards. It's insulting. Your job is not to parent the residents of DeKalb. You work for us, and we expect you to come together and find common ground on solutions that work for everyone, regardless of your personal opinions. You should be considering all information and looking to other towns, for example. I personally sent you all information from the managers of surrounding towns that allow chickens. They've all stated that we have zero negative impact on the health and well-being of the town and have cost the town nothing or negligible amounts. No feral chickens terrorizing the town and no salmonella outbreaks. Why are you ignoring this information? Do you think DeKalb residents are less responsible than people in other towns? The salmonella outbreaks you reported by the CDC affect .007% of all chicken owners in the United States. Why are you spreading fear of something that has affected not even close to 1% of chicken owners and is easily preventable? Mr. Nicholas is also suggesting that the fee for obtaining a coop permit would be upwards of $80. The permit to build a deck, gazebo, shed, or fence is $60, according to the applications on the city website. A chicken coop is much smaller than any of these structures and not permanent. There is no reason a coop permit should cost more. Mr. Nicholas recommended in the agenda that the council drop this issue because it doesn't fit with the council's public policy priorities. I disagree. Part of the council's priority, as quoted by Mr. Nicholas, is to build bridges towards better understanding among all DeKalb residents through connection and inclusion. I have not seen this emulated by the council on this issue. The people fighting to own chickens are people that care about the environment, where their food comes from, and animal welfare. Through this process, I've met many neighbors who care about the same issues. The chicken-owning community would be a supportive one, focused on education and connection to each other, the environment, and our animals. I'm not sure why Mr. Nicholas does not see this as fitting with public policy priorities in DeKalb. The Citizens Environmental Commission clearly believes it does. Several of you have also stated that the city shouldn't be wasting time deliberating on backyard chickens at this time due to the pandemic. Residents have been requesting you write an ordinance for chickens since 2012, and you've refused. Due to the pandemic, people are looking for ways to feel less isolated and more secure. As a licensed clinical social worker, I can go on about the health benefits of caring for hens, spending time with them in your own yard, and the reward of caring for a creature and being gifted with eggs. Backyard chickens are good for the mental health of DeKalb residents. Why are you wasting time instead of following the example of other towns? The work's already been done for you. Pick an ordinance and get it done. We'll continue to push for this until you do. Brittany Schaefer, Ward Two.
Thank you, Alderman McAdams. Alderman Smith, would you be so kind as to read the next letter from Catherine Norris, 713 Plum Street, DeKalb?
My name is Catherine from Ward Six, and I'm writing again to express my support on backward, excuse me, backyard chickens. I support the city of DeKalb adding a neutrally-written advisory referendum to see where citizens stand on the topic of backyard chickens. It is my belief that decisions should be made logically and intelligently. As I started about my research, I decided to look into the roles of an alderman and city manager. This is what I found. Aldermen represent the people who elect them, and the city manager is responsible for making recommendations on various issues, including budgets, personnel needs, and project costs. After reading that, I admit in this situation, it feels like the alderman and city manager are representing themselves rather than the people. At least one alderman admitted at the last meeting that he simply didn't want chickens or his neighbors to have chickens. It was mentioned with the majority of constituents didn't want backyard chickens, however, every public comment received was in support of backyard chickens. When the initial reaction was to try to pass a vote to do absolutely nothing, I felt extremely frustrated and angry. Thankfully, the majority voted that this was a bad idea. However, there are still those that are arguing to continue to ignore the situation. Why is it so important for you to not have an official record of voter stance? Allowing people to vote expresses their opinions in a provable way. As for the city manager's role in this, yes, you are responsible for making recommendations to the city on the cost of and how to fund potential projects. However, it is not your responsibility to tell citizens what they hold important and when. Oftentimes, in our jobs, we have to do things that we personally do not like, but we still have to do them because it is our job and not our personal choice. At this point, refusing to allow residents to vote on this matter sends a strong message that you do not, in fact, represent them. If we can't respectfully listen to logical arguments and respond with unbiased action to the situation as Mudana's indulgence of potentiality of potentially two dozen families, how can we trust the system to operate correctly with more important matters, such as improving inclusion and reducing crime? In order to be the best community we can, we have to be able to take on many tasks at once. We cannot ignore indulgences, as these are what people expect and want, excuse me. The rest are often expected to be the baseline responsibilities of a sustainable community. If we want people to stay in and join our community, we have to provide more. If the council does not provide a neutral advisory referendum, they might be sending a stronger message to the community than what they intended. I have so much more to say, but I'll leave with, I support the city of DeKalb adding a neutrally-written advisory referendum to see where citizens stand on the topic of backyard chickens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. That from Catherine Norris. Alderman Perkins, if you'd be so kind as to read the following letter from Matthew Anderson.
Good evening. I am writing to express my support and ordinance to allow backyard chickens. After watching the last city council meeting, I would like to share some thoughts that I hope you would take into consideration. First, the issue of salmonella seems to be blown way out of proportion. The article that was sent around by one of the aldermen needs to be put into context. Some quick research shows that there are approximately 13 million chicken owners in the United States. If all of the 900 people reported with salmonella did get it from backyard chickens, which the article does not prove but assumes, then that means the percentage of chicken owners who got salmonella is about .0007%. That is hardly something that I consider to be a threat. According to Dr. Nichols, an epidemiologist with the CDC, the majority of salmonella cases linked to backyard chickens occur in new owners who do not take the necessary precautions, like washing hands or bringing chickens indoors. Instead of banning chickens, we need to educate those who choose to own them. Something else to think about salmonella is that a person is infected after ingesting something with the disease on it. It is extremely rare for the disease to be passed from person to person. This means that if I choose to own chickens, no one around me in the neighborhood needs to be concerned about the disease. We all go to the grocery store and handle raw chicken, so I don't understand what certain members of the city council are so concerned about. I also heard that during the meeting, some of the city council members didn't think the issue was worth their time, since only 12 people are interested. I don't think that's really the case. Last year, we wrote a petition, and hundreds of DeKalb residents signed in support of allowing backyard chickens. While you may not be hearing directly from everyone, there's a lot of support for this cause. Writing us off is not worth your time, seems to me a mistake. On a similar note, I was surprised to hear that some members of the city council didn't think this was an issue they wanted to spend much time on. It is my understanding that the aldermen of this city are supposed to represent the interests of the people in their wards. If there is support for backyard chickens, I believe it's your responsibility to educate yourselves on the topic and find ways to accomplish our goals. I heard a lot of people, people, personal opinions in the last meeting, and it sounded like some of the members are making decisions based on personal bias and not the citizens are asking them to do. It doesn't really matter if you don't want chickens in your backyard, because I want them in mine. I would appreciate it if you take the values and interests of the people you are elected to represent more seriously. Finally, I would like to urge you to review the interview materials from nearby towns that were provided to you. Everyone that we interviewed reported practically no cost, issues, or disease with owning chickens in their own towns. Instead of making decisions based on personal opinions and bias, please make decisions based on the real-world information we have found for you. Thank you for your time. Matt Anderson, Ward Two.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. We have one other letter, and I will read that. I think everybody's had their chance. Thank you. This is from Jerry Wallstrom, 332 Greenwood North, DeKalb. I am writing in opposition to backyard chickens. Although I will probably never raise chickens myself, this ordinance could put me and many other DeKalb residents in the position of being a neighbor to chickens and possibly on both sides. I have read several internet blogs on comments from others who have experienced this, and the issues of constant noise, dirty, smelly coops, risk of disease spread, risk of rodent and predator attraction, and unsightly chicken coops have been repeated several times. As far as I can tell, all the positives that have been As far as I can tell, all the positives that have been mentioned are potentially positive to only one person, the chicken owners. There doesn't appear to be any community benefit or benefit to anyone other than the owners. As far as I can remember, no one has ever listed the presence of a chicken coop as a positive property feature to promote a home sale or stating that the home for sale is neighboring to a chicken coop or two. Dragging this issue out with a referendum and all the expenses and time demands of city staff should be considered, and the Resolution 2020-12 should not be approved. Okay. Democracy in action, for sure. So, we have a motion on the floor. We've heard from people in the audience. We've read letters regarding this resolution. And now I'd like to see if City Manager Nicholas, who has recommended that we not approve this resolution, for his comments. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Two pieces here in my comments. The first is that the council wanted to see what a referendum would look like. I work with this city attorney in coming up with a question that is similar to those used in other ballots in other places that speaks to what I think you were looking for, and that is for your review and comment tonight. It's part of the resolution, obviously. Then the other piece is that the council, after some discussion at the last meeting, wanted to know if it would be possible to allow for the keeping of backyard chickens if that was done on a cost-neutral basis to the city. So the obvious question was, how do we define what that is? And that is what my background was oriented to. It wasn't at the exclusion of anybody or to deny any of the other arguments. But the specific task that the council gave me, I spent some time working on and talked to the chief building official, who is in charge of our building department and also in charge of our nuisance inspections in that process. And I did not shoot for the moon here. We actually have a nuisance inspector. That person is more senior and is at the top of the pay scale in the ASME job classification that would apply here. I aim low just so that it didn't appear to be piling on, and so I use the second step if we were to think about hiring a part-time person, for instance, or not. In any case, for the record that I tried to portray here in the background, we added up the costs. If we're going to have a permitting process, which I believe is what the council was looking for, then there has to be some review. Person comes in, even if it's on the back of a piece of typing paper. Here's my lot. Here's where I want to put the coop or coops and the run and so forth. And presuming that the council had some standards. What I put in my background were the standards that have been proposed by our environmental commissions. So I'm trying to base this on a group that had already supported the idea of having the keeping of backyard chickens. And if you look at that, you see this isn't just what a couple of people have already done. Put something, jury rig something, throw it next to a stair and put the chickens in and hope that that works. The environmental commission spent a lot of time, months, talking about what the standards would be. Talked about having a minimum of three square feet of space for nesting, fair size, and then for each chicken, 10 square feet of run space, so they could walk around and not just be a factory chicken sitting on a couple of boards. And there had to be a certain setback from other properties and so forth. So with all that in mind, I created what I thought would be a decent cost, both on the planning and permitting side, and then also if there was a homeowner against whom there was a complaint and the homeowner did not want to be cooperative. What's the usual process? And I played that out for you. It's the same as we do with any of the nuisance processes. And some of you are familiar with this process, at least in its general steps with respect to weed nuisances and people don't cut their lawns and so forth. And it can come to a dollar amount in both cases that most likely people would not willingly want to pay. Would probably have to take them to court, and then it's up to us to collect. The court doesn't enforce those judgments. So this is not a, this would be a lost leader. And if you want to do it, I just want to let you know that. This is, there isn't a way that I know of without adding more cost to the city to enforce this at a cost-neutral basis. We'd have to basically go back to people after the fact and say, "Here's our tally. Here's our bill. Here's our invoice. Pay the bill." And I don't know of any system like that that works at the municipal level. People will say, "A couple hundred dollars is too much to pay for you to come out and tell me what I can't do." So that's what the purpose was, and that's why I recommended against it because in my professional judgment and the basis of a lot of years working nuisance inspections myself and also supervising those that do, it didn't seem to be a program that would work unless everybody could be trusted to be on their honor and do the right thing.
Thank you. Okay. Now, do we have any other questions or comments from city council? Alderman Morris.
Okay. First, this permit plan demonstrates three visits. We've got an initial site visit. We've got a first inspection, and then if required, reinspection, which theoretically, you know, is a maybe, and you could charge for the reinspection if it needed to happen. Also, it seems odd that you would need an initial site visit. Also, it seems odd that we didn't take the information from the surrounding cities and ask what they're doing and demonstrate that as a comparative analysis for what we're doing or what we're suggesting we do. The public letters were really on point, so I don't really want to belabor any of those points whatsoever. But I do want to point out that our guests from the Hometown Association of Realtors have two addresses listed at the top of your thing, and they are Sycamore and Sterling. Excuse me, I'm speaking. And they represent 300 Realtors, but our petition has 523 signatures. And we don't know that they've petitioned the Realtors. We don't know that all the Realtors agree with them. I'm saying that that is not on point whatsoever. What I'm saying is, we need to pay attention to what the residents are requesting and what the residents have asked us to do and allow them to decide.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We have a resolution here which is asking us to approve putting this issue on an advisory referendum on April 6, 2021, consolidated election. If you are in favor of that referendum moving forward, a yes vote would be in order. If you feel that you are supportive of the city manager's recommendation, a no vote would be in order. Pretty clear?
Jerry, if I may.
Yes.
I do have a comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, the Realtors are a professional organization, and they're speaking, I think, in terms of how they feel home values will go. And while some of them are living in DeKalb, some aren't. And this is a regional association. Yes, their addresses are in Sycamore and Sterling, but they can't have, an association can't have an office in every town. Having said that, though, I will say this. Everybody knows that I am against backyard chickens. But you may recall it several months ago that when we had the discussion about the city clerk's office, that I was the one that said, "You know, we've had a city referendum. Let's honor what the voters said." So along those lines, using Bessie's term, democracy, I think that that's the direction we should go in. I will vote for their referendum.
Thank you. Alderman Morris.
I just wanted to point out that I listened very closely to the Realtors Association's comments and points. And I think that it was a deliberate intent to make us, make this leap to assume that property values would be negatively impacted. And I even considered asking them, "Hey, how does this affect property values?" And then I realized, if they had that information, they would have led with that because that would have been the most logical argument to go with. If you have the information on, "Oh, this harms property values," that's what I want to know. That's what everybody wants to know. But they never stated that.
If I may follow up, though. Mr. Walstrom's letter, the last letter that was read, is also a Realtor. And as he points out, have you ever seen a home listed for sale as one of the attractive points of having a backyard coop? I think that speaks enough to that. And rather than drag this on, I'd say we move on to the vote.
Alderman Perkins.
Just one observation. And I was digging back through some of the background. To clarify, this isn't a referendum on backyard chickens.
No.
It's an advisory. We're asking the public what your thoughts are. And then if the thoughts of the public are yes, then we go down the path of determining the how. How do we make it, how do we make it budget-neutral? So I just wanted to clarify that one point, you know? Because I've seen the thought that it's a referendum, you know, along the lines of a school board referendum where we're going to build a high school that's going to cost X. We haven't gone that far. It's an advisory.
And to be perfectly clear, what we're being asked to do tonight is simply to approve or disapprove the fact that we're going to have a referendum. You know, we're not approving any referendum results or anything. We were just saying, we feel that the city of DeKalb should put on the ballot, April 6, 2021, a referendum asking folks if they want to approve the resolution or the urban chickens. And there was some background information on how that would be worded on a ballot. Okay. Alderman Morris.
What were the, just for clarification, what was the background information on exactly how it's going to be worded? Is that something that we are voting on right now as we make this decision?
Yeah, it was in the background.
Yeah, so in the background, the question is, "Shall the city of DeKalb permit the keeping of backyard chickens if the inspection, licensing, and registration requirements can be formed on a cost-neutral basis to the city? Yes or no?" And that's just a sample version of what we would believe it would be, right?
That's what you'd be voting on. That's what the city attorney has created for us to consider tonight.
Alderman Verbic.
I believe Alderman Finucan called the question. Alderman Finucan, is that correct?
That was my intent, yes.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Alderman McAdams.
I just did a quick Google search just to see, and the essential first page of the Google search on whether backyard chickens impact property values essentially says that the value of your house increases and decreases with supply and demand and that there's no documented evidence that this will have any impact either way.
Thank you. Okay, the question has been called. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finucan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
That resolution is approved. Number seven. Resolution 2020-103, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and awarding the purchase of cardiac monitors to Zoal Medical Corporation and approving the purchase of additional items to place the monitors in service in an amount not to exceed $60,000. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Finucan, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please.
As the background explains, we have six advanced life support ambulances in the city of DeKalb, and we have on those, on four of those ambulances, a more advanced cardiac monitor. At the time that those were purchased, back in 2017, apparently the city didn't have the money to buy two more. It happens that the older models that we have are no longer going to meet FDA regulations, and that's coming very soon. Fire Chief McMaster came to me and asked that we waive the bidding on the purchase of two more of the Zoll series cardiac monitors, which are in use now, the four that were purchased a couple of years ago. It makes sense that they would be interchangeable in our ambulances, and we recommend your support.
Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Finucan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Their resolution is approved. Number eight. Resolution 2020-104, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentives for Fareed Hawkeye for the property located at 263, excuse me, 263 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $18,011. Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Council, City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Back on May 26, the council spent some time talking about the TIF program, both the Architectural Improvement Program and also the general program involving both TIF 1 and TIF 3. And the very strong consensus was that if projects are not going to show a return on investment, then they would, if they're going to be funded for TIF purposes, they will likely be the smaller projects that fall under Architectural Improvement Program. And we have done a number of AIP grants since then, just a couple, and consistent with that council direction. And this is another one to come forward. Obviously, had a chance to look at the background. The tuck pointing that Mr. Hack is looking at for his building is, in itself, each of the bids that he's received are in excess of the total annual allocation for our AIP program and far exceed the limits, the $25,000 per project and $50,000 at the council's special consideration. And in addition to that, we only have a balance of a little over $18,000 in that fund. I don't recommend going beyond that this year. We're trying to hold to our commitments and also to our new guidance. So what I have recommended, however, because that building is a historic building in downtown in terms of its architecture, one of the two limestone facade buildings in the city hall is the other one. So I recommend that we help them preserve that facade and do so with the tuck pointing that he's proposed and assist with that. It won't be anywhere near 50% of what the cost will be, but he has agreed that this is welcome, provided the council supports it. I recommend that.
This is the house property.
Yes, it is.
Dr. Smith's property.
The Smith Building.
The Smith Building, right. Well, we'll see how the vote is, then I'll make a comment, I guess. But any further comment? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finucan.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Their resolution is approved. My comment basically is that I hope something like that allows Mr. Hawkeye and to do something with that building, to perhaps reopen it, whatever. But as our city manager suggests, that's a historical building for sure. Okay, number nine. Resolution 2020-105, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of DeKalb and the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services in connection with supplemental ambulance rates. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We've referred a number of times tonight, and we have in recent months for obvious reasons, to the fiscal impacts that the COVID pandemic has brought to our community and across the country, in fact. We are scratching, as you know. We are looking at a $4 million deficit this year, and we're trying to cover it. There's some extraordinary things that we've tried to do, and there are so many offing at the next meeting I'll be... At the next meeting, I'll bring back the topic that we've already discussed, which is the possibility of shifting $1.8 million of debt service ahead, or back, I guess you would say, so that in the next fiscal year, 2021, we don't have that weighing on our general fund. But here's some good news. Through the energetic exploration of our firefighters' local 1236 and the collaboration of Fire Chief McMaster, we've discovered a little-known and much-publicized program that is, again, dependent on sources being available at the state level, but it's provided by the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. It provides a supplemental payment that makes the city basically hold for ambulance costs, the delivery of patients is reimbursed to a certain percent by Medicare, and then we eat the rest. Sometimes that's 20%, sometimes that's more. There's a possibility we might be able to get some assistance with that. How much that will be, it's a very competitive program, but we feel that there's still funds in the program, and we're going to aggressively apply for it. We have proposed to you that we participate. The deadline is October 1, we discovered, so time is of the essence. We hope that you'll support this, and it gives us the ability, this IG, this intergovernmental agreement, to proceed with that agency at the state level and do what we can to raise some money. We have been collecting data. Fire Chief McMaster has been doing that with his staff, and we're working with the firefighters, and we're going to make a persuasive case, and we'll see if we are funded.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Chief McMaster. We appreciate that. Any comment, question, roll call?
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That resolution is approved. Our final resolution for consideration tonight, Resolution 2020-106, authorizing an agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of body cameras in an amount not to exceed $415,086 over five years. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. We have one person who would like to speak to this item prior to your description, City Manager Nicholas, and that is Steve Kapitan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I appreciate your support for the integrity of the bidding process comments that you made earlier. I would ask the city manager to please delineate for the public the differences between the recommended bid and the lower bid, and we should know what the extra $92,000 will be buying us.
City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. I'll be happy to do that. Actually, I'm going to ask for some assistance from Commander Woodruff, who's been very patiently standing in the back through this meeting for the purpose of addressing any questions you may have. So let's go back. What's the context here? The context is that, as with most places in the United States, our community has been wrestling with the movement for social justice and through protests in our streets and in rallies and before the council and the Human Relations Commission and so forth. We have solicited written comment, presentations on Zoom, and oral presentations before you, and almost to a person, if they have had the time or the interest in presenting a list of things that they would like to see, body cams has been on that list. And one of the reasons is that it's been found to be a way for everyone to be accountable, the people who are in front of the camera and people who are wearing the camera. And just as recently as last week, when I presented a status report to the Human Relations Commission, they're very pleased that we were pursuing the purchase of body cams and trying to do that this year, so that they would be in place and people would be trained on them by the time, by the time this fiscal year ends and by the time the next fiscal year begins. That's the background. To their credit, the police department, long before we saw the rise of the social justice movement or the rejuvenation of it, it's always been there, but in the spring, going back into January, the department has independently seen the advantage of this and had been pursuing, first of all, opinion, working with the Center for Governmental Studies, they did a survey online and got a statistically significant response, and nearly everyone was supportive who took time to fill out the survey. And one of the things they were most interested in, of course, was whether the digital evidence, which would be on all of the film that would be collected any given day, would be safely stored and readily accessible for the purposes of investigation and so forth. So with that in mind, the department went ahead and solicited vendors to participate in trial periods with us, and we prescribed what that would be, that for four to five weeks at no cost to the city, they would make their equipment and their process available to the same group of police officers, so they can then make a recommendation to the command staff. And that was done. One of the three vendors did not meet the minimum requirements, we discovered, as we got into that particular trial, and we removed them from consideration. But two who did provided pricing, and that is portrayed on page 16 in your background. I didn't detail all of the background information that Commander Woodruff had provided in my text, but there was information provided for the council to review the differences between them and why there might be a pricing difference. The vendor trials were all supervised by Commander Woodruff. The recommendation he has made without reservation and also the opinion of those participating officers who were involved in the trials was to proceed with the Axon Enterprises bid and to, and that requires, as Steve said, it would require an extraordinary vote, a two-thirds vote on the part of the council to approve. Commander Woodruff, do you have anything you want to add as far as the particulars that led you to propose Axon?
Um, sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
I can speak to ours about body cams if you'd like, but I'm sure you'd rather not. In short, the Axon body cams are simply the best. Most of the major cities that have body cams are using them. If you Google it, you will see pretty much Axon has all of the big contracts, all the small contracts, they're simply the best product. Now, it is a fair question about the cost and the $90,000 difference. So when we spoke with Axon about it, it really kind of comes down to three different things. Axon has a camera replacement program, so on day one, you get a body cam. Two and a half years in, you get a new body cam. Five years in, you get another new body cam. So effectively, we'd be getting 195 body cams for the price of arguably one. That is a $90,000 difference. For Panasonic, you get one body cam. Now, if it breaks, they'll try to fix it. If it catastrophically breaks, they'll replace it. But at five years and one day, you're buying a new body cam. With Axon, you're at least getting a brand-new body cam at five years, and chances are, the other ones were not going to burn through that fast, so we're going to have more than if it break, if the batteries start going dead. In theory, we are hoping to stretch six, seven years, who knows how long, without having to buy another actual body cam. That's the price difference, comes up to $90,000, so it's roughly the same as Panasonic. During the Panasonic presentation, and I shouldn't just call it Panasonic, they mentioned that they are transitioning away from body cams and they are pushing them off into their own separate company called iPro. At the time he was discussing this, he did not know the future of iPro. So it was a little bit disturbing. We're not sure if iPro is going to be around in a couple of years, it may. We're not sure of the future of it. They're transitioning to a completely different product than the one we used. It's going to have a removable battery. I don't know if that's good or bad. It seems less durable, but it also seems good to swap out batteries. And then lastly, I will say, there's a laundry list of more reasons. The functionality of the cameras are just better on Axon. The software evidence.com is far superior to the backend. We actually tried to redact a video in the Panasonic version, and it was going to take so much time, maybe eight to 10 hours for one video, that we actually loaded it into the Axon version in order to get a better result. So we took Panasonic video and redacted it with Axon, and it worked better. Still took maybe four hours, but it's better than 10 hours of staff time to do it. Trying to think, there's just so much about them that just really kind of heavily weighed towards Axon. It was really by far and above the best product. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have about it.
I just want to say this, Commander Woodruff. You know, I have been continually impressed with the background material that our city manager provides this council as we go into sessions like this. And often he will say, for additional information, you click on this. When I saw the numbers, I said, I got to click on additional information. You know, why is this? But your background, your background was extraordinarily comprehensive and really got to the point of why. Even though, to allude to Mr. Kapitan's comments, yeah, the integrity of the bidding process means a lot to me, but so does the vetting process. And I think in this instance, the recommendation to go with this one company, Axon, to me certainly makes sense. So thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Fanouken, and then Alderman Perkins.
Just a quick clarification question, if you would, City Manager. On the title in the resolution, it says not to exceed over five years, but then in the table on the next page, it says three-year price, cloud storage option with a price. Would you clarify that, please?
Yeah, good question. We talked to Axon, and, you know, we had asked for the three-year price, but they'd be willing, because they understand our fiscal challenges, to stretch it out over five years if that made a difference. And so I put that in. I should have gone back and probably changed that or added another word, a couple of words of clarification on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Fanouken, for bringing that up. Alderman Perkins?
I'm not sure what detail is really available, but it sounds like Axon has a tremendous market share in this body cam industry. Can you give me a directional thing? Is it 80, 90% of the body cam market? Is it 70?
I can't. I haven't looked it up. I'd just simply say it's a Google thing. If you Google body cams, everything you look at is going to be Axon. If you watch TV shows, cops, and all those things, you look up in every corner, it's Axon.
And I did some of that looking, and it seems like it's just a tremendous amount of the market that they have.
Yes.
And I think that would seem to provide some stability. You know, I'd hate to spend the money and go down a path of getting a beta.
Me, too.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Now we move into ordinances. We have one ordinance We have one ordinance for second reading, and that's Ordinance 2020-055, amending Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors. Section 38.07, classifications of liquor licenses by adding a new classification, laundromats. Motion, please.
For the city manager's recommendation, I'd like to move that we postpone this until our next meeting on September 28.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Smith, that we postpone this second reading consideration until our meeting of September 28. City Manager Nicholas, do you have any items at this point? Okay, any other comments? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That second reading of that ordinance will be postponed until September 28. Now we move to ordinances on first reading. The first one, number one, Ordinance 2020-057, proposing the establishment of a city of DeKalb Special Service Area Number 30, that's Hunter Ridge Brook Properties and 912 Edgbrook, and providing for a public hearing and other proceedings in connection therewith. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, going to the context, our social justice movement has also identified, as we have for a long time, the importance of housing for persons of any income level, but especially safe and well-kept housing for people who don't have as many choices as others in terms of their income. And Hunter Properties is certainly not living up to that challenge in terms of values. And we have talked about that particular ownership group in this, before the council, any number of meetings, and I won't belabor, I think we're of the opinion that we have been chasing them to do the right thing and succeeding intermittently. Here's an opportunity to go quite a bit further at the Ridge Brook complex at Ridge and Normal. And I want to thank City Attorney Matt Rhodes, in collaboration with John Donahue, for reaching a settlement which allows us to proceed with the establishment of a special service area. Well, why a special service area? We've done that for a couple of different general reasons. One, more commonly in subdivisions where there are common areas and there's no homeowners' association, where you might want to make sure the grass is going to be mowed and the signs are going to be kept and the retention pods are well-maintained. We also did it with a number of fraternities and sororities where we had an understanding that they were going to put sprinklers into those buildings, and then there was a special service area that was imposed there. Sometimes these are dormant, sometimes they're active, depending on whether we have to invoke them. In this case, it would be an active special service area. The objective here is to be able to levy up to the maximum amount, which is 5% of the property's EAV, which right now, that complex is worth, according to the supervisor assessments, the EAV is $2,129,520. And we're looking for an initial SSA levy of about $100,000, which is just within that, which, by the way, comes to about the cost, a little bit more than the cost of a police officer with all the benefits thrown in and so forth. We certainly could use the help, and we certainly could use the funding. So we are recommending that we proceed with this. Now, as you know, from the special service area we did with Market Square, there's a sequence now. If the council approves this, and we ask you to do so on both readings tonight, then we have a public hearing that we have to meet, and if less than 51% object at that public hearing, then the special service area can be implemented. And it's very important, I think, that we proceed with this. So I urge you to approve this on first and second reading.
Okay. Any further discussion? Vote on first reading. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved on first reading. Does anybody care to waive second reading and approve?
I'll move that we waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic? Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved. Thank you. Number two, Ordinance 2020-058, approving the rezoning of 822 East Lincoln Highway from TFR, Two-Family Residential District, to LC, Light Commercial District. Kelly and Natalie Deal. Motion, please.
Still moved?
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager?
We have a couple of items coming to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission. This first one is pretty straightforward. As you know, we own a small property on East Lincoln Highway right next to a property which has been used for commercial purposes. Our property is not really big enough to put another house on. There was a house there. It would never conform to building codes today in terms of minimum space for the variety of rooms you are and a minimum required to put in a house. But it would serve as a pretty good parking lot for this commercial use on the corner. So what we are asking for is your approval of a Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to rezone that site for the appropriate zoning so that that parking lot could be built.
This received a recommendation five to zero by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any further commission, any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Do we want to waive second reading on this?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Thank you. Second? Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved as presented. That ordinance is approved. Our next consideration is one that City Manager Nicholas alluded to as it related to this being approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's Ordinance 2020-059, approving the final plat of the Goldman Re subdivision, lots 49 and 50, in the Bridges of River Mist, Unit 2 subdivision. Motion, please.
Still moved. Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. I think if we know what's been actually happening in the housing market, anybody who wants to build a house in DeKalb ought to be encouraged to do so. So far this year, and we're almost at the end of the building season, we only had four permits issued. Last year, only three. You know, we should be doing somewhere around 40 to 50 a year. We're doing well on the commercial and industrial side. We're still lagging there. And per square foot, it's the biggest generator of EAV for property tax for all of the taxing bodies locally. So here's a family that wants to combine two lots, kind of different size, different shapes, create, it's still just a little over half an acre, but it's in River Mist. There are other lots out there that have been sitting there for years. We heartily support this and hope you'll support the Planning and Zoning recommendation in favor of this combination of the lots.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Waiver of second reading requested?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Morris that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved. Next, number four, Ordinance 2020-060, pertaining to the Local Coronavirus Urgent Remediation Emergency Financial Support Program, known as the Local Cure Program. Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. City Manager Nicholas?
This funding from the Federal CARES Act, which is called locally the Local Cure Program, locally within the state of Illinois, is absolutely essential to how we're going to end up this fiscal year and how we're going to do next fiscal year, and what that means in way of services and staffing. And we've talked about that at two different meetings, the joint meeting with the Finance Advisory Committee and also here with, when we were first talking back in May about the cuts we were going to have to make in overall staffing across the board. So what we're, this is something that we discovered recently. There was, thanks to the Municipal League, there was a reference to an ordinance. What ordinance? So we called and said, yeah, some of the people in the department are saying we need an ordinance, some are not. Why take a chance? So we created an ordinance. It's going to go with our certified list of costs, which we've been very judicious about this. We're not gilding anything here. And we hope to get this sent on state at the end of next week and anyway, before the end of the month. So we recommend your support on both readings.
End time is of the essence on this, is it not? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this ordinance. Let's go first reading first of all. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Do we want to waive second reading?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second?
Been approved, been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor that we waive second reading and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
That ordinance is approved. Finally, we have ordinance number 2020-061, Amending Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety, and Morals. Section 52.02, Disorderly Conduct, and Section 52.411, Nuisance Gatherings, in order to prohibit the violation of emergency public health orders. I'd entertain a motion, please.
Still moved.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Prior to your comments, City Manager Nicholas, we do have two folks who would like to speak to this item. First of all, once again, Andrew Tillotson. With Joseph Rethke and Deck.
Thank you for inviting me back up to the podium. I want to say first off that I understand that this resolution is definitely of good intent, but I want to clarify a few things about it before it becomes a motion that could potentially be voted upon. The first of these is that as a member of Sunrise DeKalb and just someone that is interested in the community, I want to make sure that this resolution does not stop people from being able to peacefully protest things. That is a major concern of mine. I know not in DeKalb, but in other places certainly protests have been broken up with kind of COVID as an excuse for that. And although the City Manager and I may not agree on everything, I certainly agree that the recent social justice movement is one that should be allowed to continue and that protests are an important part of that movement. So I guess I wanted a bit of clarification, and I guess wanted the City Council members here to keep in mind that in no way should a resolution be passed that prevents peaceful protest or is used an excuse to prevent peaceful protest. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Joseph Rethke?
Hi, yeah, I just, I pretty much had the same question Andrew did. I don't know why we submitted too. Yeah, basically, just, we're concerned about protesting DeKalb. There's been a lot of it this year, and I think it's an important part of what's going on in the community. And I'd like to clarify that this enforcement wouldn't be utilized against people who are peacefully protesting in town. And if there's any possibility of that, I'd ask that the ordinance be delayed for a vote until the community can have further input. Thanks.
Thank you. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that's a fair question, and the answer to that, I think, is obvious. Over four months, there were two arrests. A daily involvement of police officers and protesters in the street, sometimes crowds of 250 to 300, sometimes 15 or 20. And this happened from the end of May through August. And obviously, there's been a tailing off of larger crowds, but there are still people who will show up at First and Lincoln and sometimes margin today, there were some people at the police station. And I can tell you, no one was arrested for not wearing a mask. But here's our issue. We have, we are on the rise in DeKalb County. We are keeping people as best we can from avoiding the social distancing requirements within certain businesses and so forth. But recently, in the last month or so, we've had large gatherings of people just spottily wearing masks, just because they're looking for something to do. Just kind of goofing, not be bad. But how is that enforced? We don't have a mask ordinance, but there are very strict prohibitions against this from the Governor's Office, through the Department of Public Health, through our own county health department. And the expectation is that we will enforce that, not arrest people for showing, but put your mask on. And obviously, this is something that probably is going to tail off as the weather gets colder. But what can people do? I mean, they can't go into theaters in large groups of more than 50, so doing that. But it's remarkable, it's noticeable, and we are doing what the public health experts in our county and at the state level are saying you need to do. This is not a joke, because not only are you going to infect people around you, but you can infect anybody who was there or you can be affected by somebody who's there who may not even know they might be asymptomatic. And then you go home, and that's how it spreads. It's an insidious virus. So that's what we're doing here. It's that simple.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alderman Fanouken?
You know, again, I'm going to follow Phil, as you know, for several months now. I've been using this chair as a pulpit for people to wear masks. And I think the fact that here locally now NIU has gone to all remote learning. You know, DeKalb County is now on the state's warning list for high numbers. And if you listen to the state and federal health directors say the simple mask-wearing can help control the spread. And I think that's important for people to realize that just the simple act of wearing a mask in public, inside and outside, can help control the spread of the disease. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McAdams?
One resident pointed out to me that people of lower socioeconomic status will often have smaller living spaces and often spend more time outside. And so my only concern or my question or my, the thing I'd like to bring up is that we enforce it consistently so that it is not having an adverse effect on those of lower socioeconomic means.
Alderman Morris?
I agree with what Alderman McAdams just shared. In addition to that, you know, I've heard a couple of recent concerns about businesses. And I really wasn't in favor in general of doing much enforcement with this. However, I guess the way that I feel is if we're going to be putting this out there for, you know, people congregating outside, that we really need to be communicating the same to businesses, that they need to be, like, I guess I had someone specifically tell me that a very large business in the area had, would not even ask people to put on a mask if they came in not wearing a mask. And so that person felt, you know, their health was extremely threatened in that space. And so it makes people really anxious about going out in public and resuming business as usual with a mask on because they feel they're threatened by the presence of others. So I guess, you know, I hear where these gentlemen who spoke, I hear where they're going. I also spoke with the protesters today. And I was reading the ordinance very closely to try to be sure that it was not targeted at protesters. And the ordinance is very clear that it does. So it simply asks that you either be six feet apart or you wear a mask, which seems like a very reasonable request. However, it seems like we're having some targeting issues. So I think we just have to be really cautious as we implement this. I still don't even know how I'm going to vote on it because I want to be respectful of our lower socioeconomic students and population. And I just want to make sure that they are not disproportionately harmed by this when there are other people who aren't wearing masks.
Thank you. City Manager Nicholas?
I agree with Alderman Morris, and we're looking for equal enforcement. We have two different challenges here. One, that's addressed by this ordinance, which is looking at large gatherings, which oftentimes involve somebody concerned, and so the police are called. And so the police are there, and so what do we do? And we normally would say, hey, put your mask on. That's our enforcement. People refuse to or, you know, spit or something like that. And we have had that. I'm not going to go into that here. Have some COVID. But I likewise have heard, there are a couple of businesses, pretty large, as you say, pretty large businesses in town in the Market Square area. And our intent is to talk to the management there. I heard about this later today, and probably tomorrow, if you have a chance later today. This is what we've been doing. This is a new wrinkle, because most management staffs have done their very best, going to grocery stores, there's people standing there and they're wiping down your carts and they're insisting that you have a mask and so forth. These are slightly different businesses, and they're not taking those steps. And then when the management has been approached by citizens that have said, we don't order our employees to do those things. Well, guess what? We're going to talk to them, and they're going to have to. Or they get reported to the Health Department. The city has no enforcement ability here, according to the Governor's order. We are to monitor. So our way to monitor effectively is to do just that. Take it in, make a phone call, and see. Typically, we get a favorable response. If we don't, then we turn it over to the Health Department. They have the fining capacity. We do not. So we have no teeth, even if we wanted to say, you're in trouble. We don't have anything that tells them they have to wear masks. But the Health Department does, and that's the Governor's edicts. That's how it's enforced.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Any further comments? Roll call. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderman Perkins?
So trying to get my head around this here, then. So is there a scope with relation to this? Is there to mean inside, outside, just collections?
We're talking about outside. This is outside.
Because I don't see that anywhere in here. You know, it refers to collections of 10 or more people, right?
It's aimed at nuisance gatherings, which is defined elsewhere in the nuisance ordinance. You know, we're talking about people outside in a parking lot or in the grass around the parking lot. Now, we're not aiming this at people who have just had a nice dinner. They're in a parking lot, they're breaking up, they're saying their goodbyes. So that's not what this is about.
So there's a link to, there's a link in the code to outside?
There's no other purpose here except that they're not parked there. They're not patronizing a store. They're just hanging. not, they're not patronizing a store, they're just hanging, and they're not wearing masks, and they're socializing in groups of 10 or more, quite a lot more lately.
Very good. Thanks.
Yeah, pardon me. Oh, Greg, I didn't see you there. Okay, any other comments? Now, roll call.
Morris?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Move to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. We now move to the final item on our agenda tonight. We have no executive session. That's reports and communications, allowing our city council members and our city clerk and city manager and the mayor to make any comments they'd like. We'll start off, as usual, with Ward Number One, Carolyn Morris.
No report.
Ward Two, Bill Fanouken?
Thank you. I want to share on behalf of the census count from Jason Blumenthal. This year has been filled with a lot of opportunities to help our friends, neighbors, and community as a whole. Tonight, I ask for one more simple favor to help everyone out. Fill out your census. As of last Friday, DeKalb had only been counted at 67.4%. That means we're still missing roughly 33% of our population. The loss of one individual can and will have substantial effects on our community and state as a whole. One of the first effects is the loss of one House of Representatives member for Illinois, with a high probability of the loss of two. The second and more important is the effect the city and other local governments, for each resident counted, the community receives around $1,500 per person annually. These funds are used to help fund road improvements, schools, social services, and hospitals. The loss of 1,000 residents being counted would have about a $1.5 million annual impact on our community and how these services are funded. To do your part, please visit 2020census.gov to complete your census. The last day to self-report will be September 30. Remember to be seen, be heard, be counted. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Our third ward, Alderman Tracy Smith?
About a week ago, I had the opportunity to tour the new El Jimado, I'll probably butcher the name, Mexican restaurant.
Jimador.
Thank you. El Jimador, thank you. Quite a change on the inside. Actually, I was there for the grand opening of their two garage doors in the front, the windows. The building is phenomenal, and I think it shows the point of what TIP money is for. They have a great business plan. They have a very enthusiastic group of employees. And I think they're probably set to open in the next week or so. City Manager, is that close?
As soon as they get the temporary act, let's see which is almost there.
Anyway, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Tracy. Alderman Greg Perkins, Ward Four.
No report.
Scott McAdams, our fifth ward Alderman.
No report.
Sixth ward, Mike Verbic.
No report.
Seventh ward, Tony Favor.
No report.
My closing comments tonight are not only aimed at our residents, but to you city council members as well. On your fellow Alderman Scott McAdams' webpage, he recently posted a simple, one-sentence poster, which read, "Filling out the census is as important as voting this year." Nothing could be further from the truth. Here in DeKalb, our census response rate this year, which Alderman Fanouken alluded to, is about the same as it was in 2010. 67.7% or something like that. But it's not where we'd like it to be. You know the myriad of reasons, and all of you do. Smaller enrollment at Northern, students not here on April 1 this year, lukewarm response from some segments of our faith community, despite the fact that the very parishioners, the very congregants of those faith communities are those who should be encouraged to respond, because they will benefit most from those federal dollars, as it relates to social service funding. And let's face it, due to the changing demography of this community over the last 10 years, a fair number of those confronted with immigration and law enforcement banter, they simply do not trust government. Our staff has done an admirable job, working alongside DeKalb County government, in marketing the importance of the census. Self-reporting mechanisms, as Alderman Fanouken said, will end on September 30. And while the numerators may be making house calls after that, let's do what we can, as elected officials, to make a final push in your wards, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, and in our community as a whole, to ask folks to please fill out the census. City Manager Nicholas?
No report.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Who moved? Alderman Morris moved to adjourn, second, was seconded by Tracy Smith, our third ward Alderman. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yep.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
We are adjourned.